Get my voice to work. So, thank you.
Oh, that's cute. That's a good feed. Thank you. So some folks.
Oh.
He's what?
Bye. All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight. Can everybody hear me? Can you guys hear me? Okay. Thank you for joining us tonight. The public is encouraged to provide input to the board on issues of concern, whether or not the issues are on the agenda. If you would like to provide public comment, we do ask that you complete one of the yellow cards at the front door. When, if your item is not on the agenda, we will, you can join us at during public input. If the item is on the agenda, then you'll be asked to come to the podium at that time. Complete the yellow card. You can give them to Rose, please. At this time, I would like to go ahead and call the meeting to order at 7:11 PM. For roll call, Roger.
Here.
Nick.
Here.
Rosemary.
Here.
Myself here, Jennifer.
Here.
All members are accounted for. At this time, Roger, would you like to lead us in the flag slips?
Yes, yes, I'd love to.
Ready salute.
I have a resolution to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite.
Thank you. All right, during closed session, the board took action on the following items. On item 9A1, with a motion from Jennifer and a second from Rosemary, the item was approved unanimously. On items 9A2 through A6, A8 through A13, B1, C1 through 5, C7 through C12, with a motion from Jennifer and a second from Nick, the vote was approved and it was unanimous. Items 9A7 and 9C6 were tabled with a motion from Jennifer and a second from Nick, and the vote was unanimous. On item 9B1, the item was denied with a motion from Jennifer, a second from Nick, and the vote was unanimous. And that was all for closed session. At this time, we would like to recognize a special guest this evening, Dr. Shepherd.
So I'd like to introduce Dr. Johnny Alvarado, who the board approved as our new chief academic officer. Dr. Alvarado, would you stand up? Let's welcome him to Selma. He officially starts next week, but he's here this evening. We'll be joining all our principals tomorrow for our training with Rich Smith, so, and he's already doing things. So it's the transition is well underway. So, thank you for being here this evening.
And I do have to make a quick correction. The item that was denied was 9B2. I apologize for reading that incorrectly. So again, it was item 9B2 with a motion from Jennifer and a second from Nick, and the vote was unanimous. All right, going on to student representatives, let's start with Matav from ALMS. Welcome.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, school board members. My name is Matav Sahada, and I'm an LMS representative. For this week's agenda, we have Red Ribbon Week. This week is Red Ribbon Week at LMS. The theme is drugs are a trick, not a treat. There are daily lunch activities on various dress up days. We have also encouraged fifth period teachers to have their class compete in door decorating contests. In addition, our advisory time this week will be spent on lessons with living good drug-free lifestyle. Garden Club. This garden club, the garden club met this last Friday to work on some fall cleanup and to plant winter flowers. Band and Color Guard. The LMS Band and Color Guard will be participating in this Selma Rotary Band Festival this coming Saturday. Please be on the lookout for them and cheer they on and cheer them on as they march through town. Tutorials. LMS tutorials started last week. Students are able to go to various teachers before school and after school for extra help with their classwork and homework. Tutorials are open to all students at LMS. Athletics. Volleyball, girls tennis and football seasons have come to an end. Basketball, soccer and wrestling trials will begin next week. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Great job. Denise, what's going on at Selma High?
Hi. So for this week, Selma High, we are, we have our rivalry week against Kingsbury, and it, we are participating in our dress up weeks. And on Friday, we have a special pink out game, which goes for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. We are selling shirts for $15, and all donations will go to the American Cancer Society. And we also have the community rally, community rally that Friday, where we would have band forming Mexican dance as well as the varsity cheer with the youth cheer. And the leadership class will be having competitions as well as a team from the community. And that will be a bike race and a pie eating contest. And Randy Israelean will talk about the athletics and invite people to come to the game.
Wonderful. What kind of pie?
Where's the rally gonna be at?
It's gonna be here in our stadium.
At what time?
Rally starts at 5:30.
And that's on Thursday?
Thursday night.
Yeah.
There's food trucks there as well, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Great. Thank you, Denise. Oh. We have a special presentation tonight from Mr. Bedea.
Bedea, sorry.
Mr. Bedoya, welcome. And I think, do you have some, your staff here as well? Anybody that came with, Mr., would you stand up? Let's give you a round of applause for being here this evening. So he's gonna provide us an overview of educational opportunities, which, which he oversees as principal. So. And I particularly wanted him, because there's been so much communication about, and conversation regarding adult school programs, that he would hopefully give us some clarity on that as well. Welcome.
Check, check. Check. You guys hear me okay? Check, check. Check. You guys hear me?
Technology.
Check. Good evening. Dr. Shepherd, District Management Team, and esteemed Selma Unified School Board. My name is Jose Bedoya. I'm the proud principal of Selma Adult School and Heartland Alternative Education Programs. First and foremost, thank you for this opportunity to speak on behalf of our programs. I would like to use this evening to give an overview of our programs and our services. If we look at our first slide, an overview of our programs begin with our high school diploma program, English as a Second Language Program, Opportunities for Citizenship, Opportunities for Technology, Microsoft Word and Excel, and our partnership with Valley ROP, which provides career technical education opportunities for our adults. Some of those classes that we're offering currently are EMT and Wildline Firefighting. Next slide, please. Our high school diploma program is one of our core tenant programs. This, this slide here provides an overview of our credit requirements. We have a total of 180 credit requirements for the high school diploma program. This is an important year for us as a high school diploma program. Last year, in the spring, we revamped our high school curriculum to now use a curriculum called Sandgauge. This is a wonderful curriculum that we're providing to our adult high school diploma students. One of the things I'd like to point out to our, our community and member studies that the 180 credit requirements are part of our platform for student success. One of the questions we often get is why our 180 credit requirement is less than the 220 credit requirements for Selma High School and also Heartland Alternative Education. The state minimum is 130, so we're 50 credits above. We do not offer physical education as one of the waivers for our program. We also offer 10 elective credits less. So that's one of the common questions that we get for our high school diploma program. Excellent. For our high school diploma program, we offer two options for learning. One of them is face to face. We offer both day and evening classes for our students. It's self-paced. Students can work on a variety of subjects based off their requirements for work, since many of our, our students are working adults. We also offer virtual synchronous classes where students can meet with their instructors online once a week for an hour of coursework and homework review. One of the, one of the tenants that happened last year with us is that we were one of the programs that really benefited from online learning due to the pandemic with COVID. So I'm very proud of our instructors and the wonderful work that they're doing towards helping our students not only learn, but also learn technology, since that's a 21st century. Lots of fun that we're trying to incorporate with our students. In terms of technology, all of our students get access to a Selma email, which they can use to help calibrate classes and attend Google meetings. Next slide. One of the other programs for our adult school is our ESL program. Our ESL program has six classes, beginning with pre-lit and ending with level four. Our pre-lit classes provide students an opportunity for full immersion into English as well as an opportunity for immersion in language, which is one of the requirements for learning English as students progress into levels. Our goal with this program is to help students matriculate to our high school diploma program. Later on in our presentation, I'm gonna offer to have an experience shared by one of our staff members, who is a benefit and recipient of our programs for ESL and high school diploma. In terms of ESL, go ahead and go to the next slide. We offer morning and evening classes for students based off where they're at with the work and also family requirements. We work on full immersion and comprehension in terms of helping students not only be successful with language, but also offering, offering opportunities for calibration with society and laws. For example, our citizenship course allows students to take and prep for their naturalization test. We also offer through our civics classes opportunities for students to learn societal rules. For example, DMV rules and calibration towards getting their license. Excellent. We have a strong partnership with Valley ROP. Valley ROP is part of our State Center Adult Education Consortium as well as our Selma Adult School. This is a consortium that consists of adult schools, community colleges and other partners that provide adult education and also short-term career advancement training for adults that are 18 years and older. We have listed below some of the courses that we're offering currently, which is Wildline Firefighting, EMT, Microsoft Office Word and Excel. Our district accountant, Daniel Johnson, is helping us with this course. So we greatly believe in making sure that we invest in the community and provide opportunities for our adults to get advancement for career and technical education. One of the tenants that we also provide for our high school diploma program is Transition Services, which is part of the State Center Adult Education Consortium. Our transition specialist is Mary Lopez. She's a wonderful resource that works with our adult education students towards calibrating towards a better job, preparing for college, getting professional training, and also achieving personal goals, which is very important as our students progress with life and also helping their families. Excellent. Our adult school has two funding sources. We receive funding through the state, which is called CAPE. And we also see, receive funding through federal funding, which is called WAIOA. Through these two funding sources, our adult school provides compensation for instructors and also for materials and supplies for our students. Excellent. I've been asked to speak about the centralized facility and the mission and vision. There is a debate right now between consolidation of our school with Washington and also an opportunity for our adult school. I'd like to highlight some of the key tenants regarding the importance of a centralized facility. If the Selma Adult Schools need to provide this opportunity, this will allow for expanded class offerings for all Selma Adult School courses. It will also allow for expansion for our adult career technical, technical education programs to expand through our partnership with Valley ROP. Community college classes will also be able to be offered at this facility in conjunction with our partnership with Reedy College, who's one of our consortium members. So one of the things I'd like to point out to our board and public is that we're part of the South Valley Consortium, which consists of partnerships with Reedy College, Singer Adult School, Dinuba Adult School and Prolayer Adult School. So this will allow for our facility and programs to have an opportunity to also have courses here, which we've seen that with regards to transportation, oftentimes students can have access to go to Reedy College or Fresno City. Students, the community members, if this was to be realized, will have a pathway in Selma towards earning their associate's degree at the centralized facility, which is key. As I mentioned with our funding, Selma Adult School will utilize its own state and federal funding sources to maintain and oversee the facility. Oftentimes, our funding gets confused with the district, but we're a separate entity when it comes to funding and resources. One of the goals also is that if this facility was to be consolidated, we would want to make a community room that can be allowed to facilitate meetings for our Selma residents and also be open to the public regarding topics that pertain to us. Another important point, which is very important to underscore, as a community, we know that inequities exist with relations to education and poverty. Allowing the consolidation towards an adult school in one entity will allow for these inequities to further cease and allow for more socioeconomic growth for not only our adults, but also our students. So we know that that has a trickle down effect. The more our community gets educated, the more resources we have for community building, the more education, the more better it will be for our community in the long run. Removed from our adult school, I also like to give an opportunity to go over our Heartland High and Selma Independent Programs, which are part of our alt head standing here for Selma Unified School District. I'd like to begin with discussing Heartland High. This is a program that serves students in all core subjects for grades 11 through 12. Our students are placed at Heartland for a variety of reasons, one of them being for credit recovery, discipline concerns, placement can be voluntary and involuntary. We offer smaller class sizes, and students have the option of transferring back to SHS contingent upon grades. We have instruction provided by specific subject level teachers. Students can earn up to 100 credits in an academic year. We allow an opportunity for credit recovery in the mornings. And we're WASA accredited. So WASA accreditation is a, is a revenue source for academic credentialing that allows for our program to be reviewed in terms of the rigor of our programs. And it's something that I like to underscore to our community as well. Even though we're an alternative education program, the rigor of excellence still exists. And we have a very strong staff that provides excellent instruction to our students in making sure that not only do they have an opportunity for redemption, but also an opportunity to finish their education. Next slide. The other program I'd like to discuss is our Selma Independent Study Program. This serves students in all core subjects for grades 7 through 12. Students meet with their teacher twice a week for core instruction. A master agreement is outlined that lists the classes that students must take in a given academic semester. It provides for customized learning for students individually. You have an accredited recovery is also offered. Our ISP teachers teach all core subjects, and we are also WASA accredited, which is very important to underscore as well for student services. I've given an overview of our adult education programs and also our alternative education programs. A part of this presentation is I would also like to welcome one of our members of our adult school team, Ms. Claudia Torresias, to provide an opportunity to speak for her experiences regarding the impact that the adult education has had on her life. Ms. Claudia?
Hello, good evening. My name is Claudia Torresias. I'd like to tell you a little about, about myself. First and foremost, I'm proud graduate of Selma Adult School and I'm a supporter of Selma Unified School District. I have been employee of the district for 15 years. I'm currently a campus safety assistant at Eric White School, and I'm also bilingual instructional F at the adult school in the mornings at Eric White. In 2002, I began attending English as Second Language ESL classes at the adult school in order to improve my English. Following my English studies at the adult school, I enrolled in the diploma program, also at the adult school. I'm so happy and proud to, to say that I completed the diploma program through Selma Adult School, and this accomplishment has helped me tremendously in both my personal and professional life. As a result of my ESL studies at the adult school, I have been able to become a US citizen and be a positive role model for my children and showed them the importance of education. After receiving my diploma, I have been able to continue my studies by taking classes in college. There are many people in our community who are like me and will be able to benefit from the adult school program if it were offered in one central location. The various adult school classes will help them improve their lives and become even more valuable to our community as better educated and participating members. I'm sure that those who would be even, even prepare many of community members to become valuable, some adult school employees like myself. It makes perfect sense to convert Washington into the one main location for adult educational services. At present, it's a bit confusing and difficult, difficult to adult to know where, where to go for services. And I know some people get discouraged and don't pursue their dreams of education. I hope the board will consider the proposal to have Washington to be a home base for adult education as it will make access so much easier and smoother for the adults in our community to learn English, obtain their diploma, and also can join a career classes. Imagine what amazing campus deal would be if all services were located in one place. It has been an honor for me to have and share my story with you. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Claudia. I'd like to give an opportunity for our board or community to ask any questions regarding, anything regarding our presentation. I'd like to really stress how grateful I am to speak on behalf of my school. Just a little bit of a story. When I took over as principal, one of the things that was shown to me and told to me by my staff was that our adult school was a hidden diamond. I cannot agree even more. So it's definitely something that we want to bring to light, particularly with our work with our consortium. We want to be able to invest in our community. We're doing so. As Ms. Claudia mentioned, one of the limitations at times is our access to facilities. So for example, our ESL classes are at Selma High School right now. We have our high school diploma program at one portable in our Heartland site. But having an opportunity for one consolidation will not only allow us to experience. an opportunity for one consolidation will not only allow us to expand our classes, but also allow for more opportunities for growth, which is what we want to do with Reedy College.
Yeah, Mr. Berdola, I have a questions, few questions. You guys are doing great jobs, well as your staff. I congratulate you guys. And how many students, how many adult students you guys have at your place?
Definitely, thank you. So we have 96 students enrolled in our high school diploma program. We have 79 students enrolled in our ESL program, and we have 58 students enrolled in our CTE workforce reentry program. So we have a total of 233.
Great. You mentioned working with the VROP or also doing a central location at a Washington Elementary School. I think it's a great opportunities. I see that you guys could do the collaboration, collaboration with the city and with the local, the communities that works together to the opportunities for those people, the citizens of Selma that have a better in their educations and they get an opportunity to get the jobs so forth. I think this is a great idea that maybe, maybe work with the city of Selma too. Having this opportunity and see the, see what the community wants too, you know. I think it's a great to have a one central location. I'm looking forward, you know.
Thank you, sir. We completely agree. We definitely see not only the potential, but the long-term benefits of gain. And I'd like to stress again, you know, more education allows for more economic growth, which allows for more social advancement for our families, both collectively and individually. So thank you.
One more question. Do you guys track how many students goes to the further education into the college last few years or?
Yes, we have a steady, a steady number that always continue going to, for example, Reedy College or Fresno City and continue, for example, Reedy College. We have a partnership, as I mentioned, with Valley ROP. So we have a lot of students are entering into the mechanical programs. There's a thriving aerospace program that students are entering as well. So in these two years, they're able to not only make a substantial amount of income, but also change their family's life. So we are working on that. And Mary Lopez, our transition specialist, she does a wonderful job connecting our students that are going to graduate to those platforms of success. Thank you.
Quick question. I know pre-COVID, you offered more career dedicated classes such as the security classes for the security guards, and I believe the drone classes. And I think those are still being offered at Sanger and Dinuba. Would we be able to bring those back with space?
Excellent question. Most definitely. That's one of the things I'd like to stress is that our partnership with our South Valley Consortium, we help one another. So where there is enrollment available, we partner up to make sure that we have students coming from not only Selma, but then those local offices, like I mentioned, Dinuba, Parlier, Sanger, Fabrizio Lafaro, who we all met, is our wonderful resource. He works with us very closely with our adults to make sure that we're providing the best services, and we're also doing our labor surveys to calibrate what are the needs for our community.
Does the public have any questions? Thank you.
Hey, well, thank you very much for this time. I really appreciate it. And shout out to Selma Adult School and to Heartland Alted. You guys have our awesome staff. Thank you for everything. Have a good evening. Thank you.
All right, at this time, I'd like to open the floor for public input. Members of the public wishing to address the Board of Educational Matters within the jurisdiction of the board, but not on the agenda may do so during the public comment period for up to three minutes. Public comments on specific agenda items are heard under that item. And for the public record, please state your name.
So with Ms. Josefina Hernandez, please step to the microphone, please. Does Josefina need to come up? Andre, can you give Josefina your microphone? Oh, see, so it's Josefina and Sophia together. That's fine. Yes, that work?
I'm a little nervous. I have a concern. I got a letter. The bus transportation of our children. They told me that that decision was made by the, at a meeting of the board. That they were not going to be picking up children in certain areas. Like I know parents that live in the same area that I live, we have a lot of children that go to the same school. The bus takes them. And I know that a lot of parents work. And that's the concern that we have, that they're going to take bus transportation away from us. Lot of parents work. And that's a help, that they don't have to take their children to school. That's what I wanted to comment tonight. I hear that they made that decision, but I don't know if they sent a letter stating when you guys were going to make that decision. The only letter we got was a letter that stating that you guys had already made the decision. Okay, my son, Su hijo, my son goes to Abraham Lincoln, and I live two and a half miles away from Abraham Lincoln. The bus transportation department told me now they were taking in consideration a different number or different distance, I mean. And that's what they told me, and they're the ones that told me to come to this meeting to talk about that.
My name is Juliana Castillo.
We have many years with the same bus route in different areas. We don't understand why there's a change up to now. Because there's a lot of children that are going to be left without transportation. There's several of us parents are very, very worried. Because the distance that we have to walk is pretty great. There's a lot of us parents that we don't have transport, we don't have a car, we don't have transportation. To be able to take our children to school. So we would like to ask you to help us so that you don't take that transportation away from us. That was all. Thank you.
Thank you. Rose, can you get their addresses, please? So that Andre can, we can look that up? Yes. So I think we have another speaker, Juan and Sophia. Oh, I'm sorry, Josefina.
She's just wanting to say that, I know it's just her and I that came, but there's a lot of parents that they know of that have the same concern.
Perfect. Are Juan and Sophia here?
I think there was some more Spanish speakers.
Juan and Sophia are Spanish speaking as well. Hello?
Good evening. My name is Juan. My wife, Sophia. The reason we are here today. Because we received some letters at home. Regarding the bus transportation. We have had bus transportation about three or four years. That's the time that I've been here in Selma. And I'm seeing that you're going to take bus transportation away from my children. I have five children. One that do not, I mean, they don't depend on themselves. Two that you're going to, the two older ones, you're going to take transportation away from them? One of them hasn't received the letter. My question was, can you help me with that issue of the bus transportation? Because I live in an area outside of town. On Highway 43. On the other side of 40, Highway 43. If you were in town. That would be fine. They could be coming walking. Because, but I am in a very dangerous zone where there is no crossing. It's the Highway 43 for Corcoran. You can't really cross that street. And that has worried, has us worried? I understand. Excuse me. I can see that. You guys make those decisions here. It should depend on where the location of the children. And there is children that really do need the bus transportation. My wife now will make a question. Buenas noches. Good evening. Like my husband was saying. That is our worry. If we look at the map where we have to walk. There's almost 40-minute walk. More than anything, our worry. It's crossing that street, that 43, 43, right? Yeah, crossing Highway 43. If you take shortcuts, it's a little shorter. But if you go through where all the, the, oh, again, I said last my train of thought, the, the. The signal lights, the signal lights, sorry. If you take all the signal lights, it's a lot, lot longer. On our behalf. That you would take our concerns and our vote into consideration. There could be another option. In an area where maybe the children can still stay in that area of transportation. That's all that I have. Okay. Okay, thank you. I'm thinking about that. If they do not have bus transportation. That I would have to teach my child to drive. If there's no bus. And that would be very dangerous. So as far as I'm concerned. I will, you know, take charge, I will, you know, teach him to drive, get him insurance, get him a car, I guess. But if you can help me in that area, I would really appreciate that. Good evening.
Thank you. Josefina, would you ask all the parents to give us their addresses, please? Thank you for coming tonight. Gracias. Jerry Garcia.
Okay. Good evening, President Jensen, other board members, Dr. Shepherd, and the assistant superintendents. I am Jerry Garcia, the president of Selma Chapter 231. I am one of approximately 390 members. And I am here tonight to remind you that classified members are still here providing essential services to the students of Selma Unified. Please don't forget about us and the vital services that we provide daily. I would also like to thank Teresa Wood for requesting to reinstate the administrative assistant for athletics for Selma High School. Thank you for your time. We live here, we work here, and we vote here.
All right, with that, we'll go ahead and close public input and move on to our discussion and action items, starting with the COVID-19 update.
I'd like to invite Mr. Dixon up to give you an overview. I believe you all received a handout of it. I know it's in here somewhere. Yes, like here, it looks like this.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. Dr. Shepherd. So this is our, every board meeting, we're giving an update of where we are with our COVID response. So on our second slide, we will see, again, we are still working off of the October 1st guidance from the California Department of Public Health and Fresno County Public Department of Public Health. We are looking at our contact tracing. So we do have a confirmed positive case on a campus. We are doing contact tracing. Some of the changes are if students are wearing masks, we're not sending everybody home. So that's one of the things, trying to keep students in classrooms. As we also look at that contact in the classroom and when they're outside. One of the things I'll talk about a little bit is unfortunately, from time to time, we do have to close a classroom. Unfortunately, today, we did close one of our classrooms at Wilson Elementary due to a confirmed case. Very small classroom is one of our special ed classrooms. The contact that was occurring in the classroom, so we had to take all of that into account. Usually when we're looking at an elementary classroom, we're looking at if there's two or three cases in a very short time period, and we cannot determine where the spread is coming from, like I said, from home or somewhere else, we are being forced to actually being requested by the county to look at closing a classroom. So we have had to close a few classrooms. And as I'll give you some information as we go along, with siblings, siblings are still being sent home when we have a positive case. And then we are offering our testing. They do have to do a test, and if it comes back as a negative, that they're allowed to return. Currently, the information on here, the chart, you will see that we have, as of Friday, 97 cases in October in Selma Unified. And this is up through Friday, we had five cases today. So that put us up to 102 cases for this, this time. Fortunately, it is slowing down. Last time, I was kind of, the sky is falling, all the cases, and we were very, very concerned. But we're seeing that it is slowing down. It's not a time to give up. It's time for us to keep looking at what we can do to help slow the spread and how we can help our families. So you can see by school by school. So you can see by school by school how we're doing each month. And we're still dealing with a number of cases, and it's affecting all of our schools. I wanted to provide a little information for you on, the next slide is the transmission data. This is coming from Fresno County Department of Public Health. About eighty percent of our, actually, COVID transmissions are happening at home when we're looking at our students. And I was just looking at school age, so looking at our children that are five to eighteen, we're seeing that about eighty percent, it's at home. Three to four percent is happening at schools. A very, very small percentage, and with wearing a mask, that is something we're doing, really just try to slow that spread. On our next slide, we will look at a little bit more information. Again, all of this can be found for, for anyone, it's on the Fresno County Department of Public Health. They have Safer Schools, I believe is the link on there, and you can actually get to the youth data, and that's where this is coming from. So right now, when we're looking at our five to eighteen-year-olds, so I took the zero to four out, so I wanted to look at, what is, what are we looking at for school-age students? So far this year, twenty twenty-one, we have had seven hundred and eighteen cases in Selma for these school-age children. That places number three in the county. So that, that's been a big concern, looking where we are in the county. And, you know, you will see that Clovis and Fresno, by size, they're, they're number one and number two, but we're up there. In the last thirty days, that, that's the other column here, in the thirty days, we've had a hundred and forty cases, again, these are positive cases of school-age children. This is a decrease. Last time we saw that, we were, had the green arrow showing that, we were, we had increased about twenty-eight percent in the last thirty days. Now we're seeing we're down twenty-seven and a half percent. So it is kind of bouncing around, but it's still a concern of, you know, where we are. So we're seeing a decrease in number of cases, but that could change at any point, and this is what they're looking at for a thirty-day. If you look at the other communities, other communities are at forties, in the forty percents, fifty percents, and some are up into the seventy percents. You know, as we say with our academics, we don't want to be at the bottom, we want to be at the top. We want, want to see the low numbers, actually. And so we are looking at, it is getting better. As a district, we are doing a lot of testing. We have approximately eighty-five tests a day that we're doing right now. That's our PCR testing. So we are offering it to our students, including our staff, and with our parents. So when parents are coming through, they're asking, can I get tested too? And so we're trying to determine if, you know, the spread is happening in the family, can we stop that spread? And so it's interesting, some of the families, when they come through, you find out every member of the family that we test has tested positive. But it's, you know, trying to, how can we, again, slow this down? We started with the testing of staff, so again, mandated by the state of California. We have implemented testing on all unvaccinated staff and those staff that have declined to state their vaccination status. We have about a hundred and forty-six staff members, this is not including substitutes that we are going to be testing each week. So it is weekly testing. So we started on October thirteenth with that testing. We're doing that at the school sites, district office, and then we're also going out to transportation. Again, trying to give people, instead of having everyone travel to one spot, going out to the sites where they can go and get tested. Tests, the tests are being the PCR test, we are getting results in about forty-eight hours right now. So the color labs have increased their testing capacity, and so we are getting our test results very quick. Mr. Winarci, you have a question for me?
But I was gonna let you finish before I ask my question.
Okay. We are still gonna look at how we're gonna test substitutes, when substitutes report for the first day of the week. So if they only work one day a week and they show up on Thursday, that's when they'll be tested. If they're working on Monday, they'll go to the nurse's office where they're working to start their work week, and they'll be tested there. So we'll be testing, again, anyone who's in contact with students. One of the questions I got today was, we have one of the nighttime custodians, and goes, where can I go test it? And I said, start your day off at the district office, come to my office, we'll get you tested and get you right off to your school site. So, you know, we're getting real efficient with it, and some of our staff are, you know, when they've gone through it two or three times, they, they know the procedures. And so we're, we're able to get someone in and out of there in like four minutes or less. So they're coming in, we have labels on it, we're, you know, everything in our, put in a special bin for our staff, so we're pulling them out, handing to them, and we're testing. One of the areas that we are working on testing, and we're still trying to determine where the state is gonna go this, is athletics. We are looking at wrestling will have to be tested. We will be doing rapid testing on them, once they get ready to start the competitions, we'll be testing them on Mondays. So I've already set up with Randy Israelian, and here at Selma High School, and Ed Vera at ALMS, to, to get a testing plan. So that we can be there and, again, not stopping the process, you know, how can we get through and test the students? Basketball is gonna be one of those very unique ones. The state has stated that we, any sport, and again, their, their list is like indoor gymnastics, indoor swimming, indoor diving. It's like, okay, fortunately, we don't have those things, we're in California. They are looking at, the only one that's really indoor for us is basketball and wrestling. Basketball, they're saying, is to wear masks. And it said, unless there's a choking hazard as identified by a major medical organization. Well, the American Pediatrics Association says it is not a choking hazard for basketball. Well, we started, I was working with Randy Israelian on Friday, we were looking at a lot of different masks that were out there. Masks that are designed for athletics, but we are also looking at, can we do testing instead? But we, we've ordered a few samples of masks to try them out, you know, is this something that we can use? Because we don't want to put out a student out there and put them at risk. So we are, again, continue to research that one, we're continuing to listen to the state. But looking at, you know, are we gonna need the mask, or can we do testing with basketball is our question right now. One of my last slides, we are working with Fresno County Department of Public Health on setting up a vaccination clinic. Originally, we were looking at two of them, and they've, what they recommended to me was, let's hold off on the second. Because right now, we do not have any authorization for a vaccination for our five to eleven-year-olds. So they're saying, let's really hold off, let's look at that and wait to hold a clinic until there is emergency approval for that vaccination. And offering that then to the community for those who are wishing to have that vaccination. I did list on here, because we do have people at home watching this presentation, of where we do have some of our clinics in the area. So these are vaccination clinics, not testing. And so they can, some of them do charge, but some of them do not. So Selma Senior Center is one of the ones that is run by the county, and you can make appointments there and get your immunizations. But a lot of our other health organizations and like, you know, different entities, so, you know, Walmart, Walgreens, United Health Center, Fox Drugs, Selma Pharmacy, all these are offering immunizations also. I will say that Selma Senior Center, they're doing it on Tuesdays through Saturdays, so they are offering that immunization. But we are planning to have one here at Selma High School on the thirteenth of November, it's Saturday, from nine to one, and that's open to the public. This time I go and take any questions?
You know, I got one, Wayne, you know, I have one. So I'm, for the staff, does it have to be a PCR test, or does, or can it be rapid?
It's because of our small supply of rapid. What has happened so far in the county, they've been, anything that's being supplied, they've sent off to Fresno and Clovis Unified. So we have a very small supply, and looking at with the athletics, that we are then needing that response to that very quickly. So that's why we've kind of saved up that stock of the rapids. So we are hoping that they will start shipping them more often, and then we can do the rapid. The other part with the rapid would be the training of our staff and the, the time to then conduct the testing. Is that, that's all, right now, one of our worries with high school wrestling is then the time.
The turnaround time.
It's, it's, yeah, to actually conduct the, the chemical process on it.
My concern would be, thinking of forty-eight hour turnaround time, you have a teacher that, or a staff member, I should say, who is getting tested on Monday. Forty-eight hour turnaround time, they get those results back on Wednesday, and they're positive. So now, so that's, this is why I'm asking.
Yeah. If we, if we were to use a rapid, we would be out of them by, you know, probably about two weeks, by testing our staff.
So the, the, so the staff that are getting tested weekly then, if they have asymptomatics at all, I'm assuming that they're not gonna be at work.
Correct.
So they have to be asymptomatic.
That, that's the thing, I mean, we're almost preaching it of, if you're feeling sick, stay home. And a lot of them are, I've had some staff members contact me saying, you know, so I sent out an email today about testing. They said, you know, I already went somewhere else and got tested, so I wasn't feeling well. So they are doing that on their own, they're, they're not like, oh, I gotta save that sick day. They are taking that responsibility and following through.
Okay, right.
I, I, to be honest, I would love to have enough of the rapids to be able to use them that way. But we know that we'd go through them very quickly. We've, the, right now, there are four of us trained, and with our new staff, we will be training them also.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Dixon, I have a question on it, far as the students, you see a psychologist, kind of like on the students suspecting on it. Is there cases, anything coming up to the schools, the students having problems with the, from the previous years? Now they're coming on the board last few months, and they're having a problem throughout the school now, they want to see a psychologist. Are you guys referring to any, any of those students like that, or see any cases?
With our mental health staff, it's one of our things will be coming up on, you know, hopefully a few minutes. But it's, we are looking at the need to increase our, our mental health staff. Kristy Rangel is here, and she could share, their caseload is very full. We have a lot of students self-reporting the need for assistance, that they're needing someone to talk to, the stresses that they are in from returning back to the school site. Returning to, you know, oh boy, what if there is COVID, there's, there's a lot of anxieties that are going on, and our staff is addressing that. We're also working with our All For Youth. You know, one of the things that we're very concerned of is our outside organizations are very understaffed. In some cases, it's taking one to two months from a referral from one of our mental health staff to one of our outside agencies for them actually to make contact with this child. And in many cases, they're only seeing them once a month, and it's telehealth, so it's on the computer, it's not even face-to-face. Where I take my mental health staff here and say, they are face-to-face, they're there. And so, you know, one of the things that will come up is looking at, how can we better serve our students? And that, I'll do the little pre-add of, that's why we've kind of got that as an item for tonight, of how do we make sure that we are servicing our kids? And with my staff, I will say, they're not gonna say no to any child. They are looking at how high priority they are, they're working with them most, and then they are seeing students on just walk-in and that drop-in. And, you know, right now, their caseloads are twenty-eight, twenty-nine, which may not sound high, but for mental health, that their caseloads are full. And.
What are we, what are we doing for our staff when it comes to mental health? Because just as much as our students are struggling, we have staff members that are struggling too. I mean, I, you know, in my, in my line of work also, it's, it's tough being out there as an RN, day by day, you know, day after day, out there on the front lines in an ER. So, you know, and I know what I'm getting into, but, you know, our staff didn't sign up for this, so what are we doing to help support our staff?
We've put information out there, I know Kristy and staff will refer out, and Kristy, you want to come on up? So, you know, it's really our clinicians are designed for our students, but they are providing information to them, and I'll let Kristy go ahead.
Okay, so as far as our staff, they know they, if they reach out to us, we do assist our staff with getting connected with services. So we'll get an email, and they'll stop by the office and ask, hey, I need to find, you know, mental services, not only for themselves, but their own children. And so we are constantly finding referrals, and I received, is it through employee assistance, is it EP, EPA?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we've also been connecting them with those services, so I'm providing them with those flyers and that information as well.
I know community hospitals, I work for communities, community hospitals, I know they've really done a big push with, with the telehealth, with Talkspace has been a big one, that they've really encouraged our staff, um, the community, medical centers, to, that's one of the companies that they've, not endorsed, but, but encouraged.
So, yeah, we're going based on what they're requesting, so we'll provide them with some different providers, and most of our staff do want in-person. That everyone's kind of tired of the telehealth and telepsych, so it's under, it's understandable, and I think that's why we're, we're asking for another clinician position. Because it's not only our caseloads of twenty-eight to twenty-nine, but they're, they're our highest-risk kids that we're working with. But on top of that, we're also providing services to the students that are waiting to get services. So it's managing our caseload, but then still continuing to follow up and check in with those students until they're fully connected. Along with the drop-ins, and I'm at the high school five days a week, in the mornings, on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, I start off at the elementary sites and at the middle school. And then I always end up back here at the high school, because our kids are self-referring, they're dropping in, I need help. We're seeing an increase, you know, with domestic violence, with substance use, with everything, it's all impacting our students. And a lot of the time, it's, you know, I was home for a year and a half and I need help now, so they're seeking out support.
I'm just happy we have that support for them.
Yes.
Because there's, you know, so many, so many places that they wouldn't be able to get that support, and I know it's a lot on you guys. But I truly appreciate the fact that we have this resource for our students. And even if you guys can't see them, at least you're trying to get them those resources that they need, because it's so, so important, so.
Yeah, and I guess we'll be back. More questions, but again, I think one of the biggest things is that we continue to follow up, and one of the things that our families and our students have made complaints and wanted in-house services is because they're constantly being like, you know, the burnout right now, right now for mental health, it's, it's really high. And so they're getting constantly switched around with different therapists, and here it's consistent. And they know if they can't find one of us, they know one of the other clinicians is available, and we kind of tag-team, if I'm not here, you know, Kimberly or Lizette are here to like follow up and check in, so.
And there's Jeter and Sky.
And, and that's the, yeah. That's always the entering point of, hi, can I come in anytime my door is open, because our office is in the library at the high school, oh yeah, come on in, can I say hi to Jeter and Sky? Yeah, sure. And the next thing I know is, well, actually, I need help with, and so it's, it helps, but.
It's kind of the saying, you know, there's lots of balls you're tugging, the one you do not drop is the student's. And our staff, they, our teaching staff, our mental health staff, they're there for our kids.
Yeah.
And, and we see that every day.
You have a four questions? David Wright would like to come up and speak.
Hello. Dave Wright, pseudo-president, I just had a few things come up today regarding the testing of staff members, new schedules and whatnot have come out. But at first, we were under the understanding that staff members that needed to be tested go to, could go to the nurse's office on Mondays and Tuesdays. The concern was that there could be students in the office, therefore, you lose privacy. Then we received Friday an email stating that testing would be after lunch on Monday and on Tuesdays. But today, we received a third email saying that there was a schedule, a new schedule regarding testing. So now I just need clarification as to whether or not Tuesdays will still be available for teachers. Or we have to adjust to the new chart that, that came out today. And maybe Wayne can answer that. We just need some clarification on that, because if there were teachers that thought Tuesday would be a testing day, and it's not available tomorrow. I don't know, I'm not quite sure what they can do about that. And second question. And second question, yeah, will there be a saliva test available in the future? I'll just take those sitting down.
Take it sitting down?
To the first one, we do not have this saliva test available to us with the system we're using Valencia Color Labs. Right now, they're only a PCR and will be moving to a rapid very soon. Since it's a lab we are using, we're within, they say the current rapid that we have will be able to start using with their labs. And it's just a reporting, because we'd still be conducting the chemical test on it, you know, getting the results. As far as the scheduling, I I'm not sure about the one on Friday, that might have been a site-based one. But we were looking at the number of staff that's being tested. We did respond to the request of, because the high school health office is a busy place. So we are using on Mondays the school resource officer's office space. One of the health aides will be going over there to provide the testing. So we looked at a way to provide that confidentiality, but we did look at, you know, having someone being idle away from the health office, so we did look at the number of staff at each site that needed to be tested and adjusted the the schedule based on that. Some of our sites, we're looking at only offering testing for a couple hours, because there's at one site I have four staff members tested, other sites we have like thirty. So we're looking at, you know, the number of tests, but, you know, making sure our staff is available for the students also. And so the schedule that went out this afternoon was based on the number of sites, number of staff that's available and staff that is being tested. And that's the schedule that he's referred to, third schedule. As far as tomorrow, because the, Mr. Wright, I'd say, we'd still be doing the testing tomorrow. It's because that schedule did come out late, we can work around the staff. And for staff that, if they're absent on a testing date, we did say that they can go in and schedule with their the health aide or the certificate school nurse. Or they can also come to my building also, we'll be testing there. So if they're unavailable, you know, they are a part-time staff and someone's not available. When we have testing going on, we will have someone available to test them, so we'll work with them.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Dixon, I just wanted to make people aware that a lot of teachers with the teacher shortage, substitute shortage, a lot of teachers are selling their preps, have sold their preps. A lot of them are subbing every single day and sometimes there are problems that you have to deal with with a few students that might cause a problem in the classroom and your schedule is altered, you can't get to the nurse when you need to, because you're handling a student situation. Or you're subbing and all of a sudden you're out of time, so I just wanted to make a point of that. But thanks for your answers.
And I think that, and we totally understand that and we're trying to accommodate everybody, but it's not an option whether they get tested. So it is a requirement, so just keep Mr. Dixon in the loop, we have staff that we can be flexible with. Okay, the next one, this is really brief, just a little update on the consolidation of schools, we continue to try to pull some information together. So I've sent out a Google survey to all the staff at both Washington and Eric White the last week and asked them to provide some input regarding the consolidation. One question was, what are things that you want us to be aware of and to really make sure we address? And then also any suggestions that should this consolidation be approved? What things would need to be in place to make it a positive transition? So we're still working on some of the requests from community answers that we'll be pulling together and get that out. But this will be on, the the decision will be on the November the thirteenth? Fifteenth board meeting, the November, is it fifteenth, Rose? Thank you for helping me. November fifteenth board meeting, so just, but and if anybody has questions or needs information, please feel free to reach out to me or Andrea Fronti or Mrs. Wood, there's a lot of details that we'll still need to work through. But we're just in that process right now, so. Any questions from anyone? Alright, the next item we have up is a middle school math proposal pilot program, Dr. Katania and this is Ms. Rios is there, I can see her feet. Kim, Kim is our math coach and she's very energetic and committed math coach. She loves what she does, so anyway, so I'm going to turn it over to these ladies.
Just as a a little bit of background before Kim gets started. If you could go to, let's go to the last page where it's a, it's the schedule of the California Department of Education adoption cycle for instructional materials, it might be at the very end. It, yeah, it was a separate attachment.
There it is.
Oh, no, no, keep going. Okay, see if it wasn't another attachment, while they're finding it, maybe Rose can help them find it there. So as you might remember, California Department of Education has a cycle of instructional materials adoption that every seven years, one of the seven different core subjects comes up for adoption. And of course, because of in the previous three years and because of COVID, that all got disrupted. But as everything's getting back on track here, and you have it in your packets as well, there's a schedule for first, the framework gets revised and adopted for any particular subject. Then, after the State Board of Education adopts a revised framework, so in the case of, for instance, mathematics, they look at the grade level standards, they look at, they have public hearings and take a lot of input and in adopting that framework. And then as soon as it's adopted, the publishers then have a year to produce instructional materials that then correlate with the newly adopted framework. And those instructional materials go through a very rigorous process, it's called the Instructional Materials Commission where people are chosen and they literally go page by page, item by item through every publisher's submitted materials. And from that, recommendations go to the State Board of Education on what the commission's recommendation is for which of those publishing materials should be adopted, because they correlate closely to the frameworks. And then, once the, and remember, I'll just remind you that kindergarten through eighth grade materials are actually California State Board adopted. High schools don't have an adopted list, however, the high school grades are in the updated framework and then high schools can choose whatever publisher materials they feel that meet the the grade level standards. So again, the CDDE adopts a kindergarten through eighth grade list in this, these cycles. And from when the State Board adopts the list, school districts by by the rule of the Williams Lawsuit Settlement Agreement Act, schools have two years then to get those updated instructional materials in place. So when it comes to math and like say, eventually you'll have this, but math, the framework adoption, the framework adoption is coming out right now. It it was out for public hearing and it will be adopted to let you know by the State Board next May, then the publishers will work on instructional materials and actually publishers are constantly updating their materials.
Can you move it back to the first slide, please, with the dates?
There we go, I knew we'd make it. So you can see on the second line there where, well, third, mathematics. So you can see, they started working on revising the framework in twenty nineteen. The State Board of Education will be adopting that new framework in May of twenty two. Right now, like I say, it's out for public hearing across the state. And then the publishers will be producing the instructional materials, the updates to those. And the instructional materials adoption for math is twenty of twenty four. And then the district would have two years, so by July of twenty six, you would have to have kindergarten through eighth grade, those materials in your district at that time. Typically, that means in July of of twenty six, you would select by that time, train teachers over the summer and then you would begin. So you have this in your packet, you can look at these as we go along. One of the things that we've done through in looking at the academic results of student achievement over the past three to four years is it was pretty evident that we can't wait for this date for math materials. Particularly in talking to the teachers and the principals and the coaches, middle school and high school, those math materials really are not meeting the needs of our students. And the teachers feel like they need updated materials urgently and now to be able to better meet the needs of our students, especially since during COVID, we know we've had that learning loss go on. So one of the areas we're going to, Kim's going to talk about is that to do a, to look at materials to pilot at the middle school this year. And the high school is also looking and selecting materials they would like to pilot, so they'll be coming to you at a future board meeting to more meet the needs of our students. The other thing I might mention is in talking with Dr. Shepherd, when you're looking at that instructional materials date, you're going out two years on when those have to be in. Adoptions are very, very expensive, as you know, as you remember in the past. Particularly language arts, language arts typically is the most expensive adoption because especially early literacy, kindergarten through third grade, there are so many different components to be taught from phonics to word recognition to vocabulary and trying to accelerate vocabulary. Typically, English language arts adoption for a district this size, kindergarten and with the high school refreshing also, is about two and a half to three million dollars. So if you're thinking about, you know, if you can round that off an average about one and a half to two million dollars per year, that's going to be starting to hit you and hit your budgets. It's definitely a budget item that has to be planned for in advance. So as Kim's going to come talk to you about this pilot, you know, the teachers are taking very seriously the amount of money that would be spent on these materials. And that's why also through the pilot, we will be looking very closely. And Kim is week by week, month by month, about to make sure, are we getting the learning with the students we're expecting out of these materials? So that we know that we're spending that money, but it's paying off because our kids are being able to accelerate their learning. So with that.
So I will assume that Kim's going to address the new state framework in this, because we certainly don't want to go down a path where it's not aligned with with the state framework that's going to be released.
Absolutely. Good evening, my name's Kim Rios, I just want to thank you guys for the opportunity to get to talk to you a little bit about the math pilot that we're taking a look at and the math curriculum that we're considering. And this, go ahead and if you guys can pull up the presentation. And this is going to focus on six eight, although I will say that K K five also needs to be on the forefront of our minds because our data there is also in need. But our opportunity this year is where we can really focus in and take a look at, what is our six eight material look like? How are students performing and 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 use this as a real focused effort? So that we can build on that and extend it to the high school and also down into our elementary schools. So I'd like to start off with talking about what is illustrative math and Desmos, like where did this come from? So illustrative math is a certified curriculum that is an open source curriculum. And what that means is that you can access all of the lessons and materials freely online, you can access it. So what they've done is they've partnered with different publishers and and companies such as Desmos. And where Desmos comes into the mix is they've taken what is freely accessible and created interactive lessons from those illustrative math lessons. So the scope and sequence, the routines that are used, the coherence, it all is aligned. And Desmos has taken and they've got about eighty percent of their lessons are digitally based and twenty percent are paper-based. Although all lessons are available paper version if we need to, so we're not, you know, stuck if like computer goes down like today when the power went out, right? We have an option for that. Go ahead and go on to the next slide. So why now? Why would we consider this when the frameworks are not even, you know, finalized yet? So I want to talk a little bit about the themes that we're seeing in the drafts of the framework. I've read through all the chapters, I've looked at really in-depth what specifically is being called out. Rather than reading through this whole slide, I want to really point out one thing. The call right now is that we're not just teaching content skills, okay? We really need to help our students understand when to apply those skills and how it works in the world. But beyond that, it's through oral and written language. And so we need to be taking a look at, does our curriculum meet the needs of all of our students? Are students speaking about math? Are they writing about math on a daily basis? And so in the frameworks, illustrative math tasks that have been designed over the years and the lessons that they've created have been written as exemplars of what math instruction should look like. So obviously, that's where we want to take a look, okay, well, what does this look like? Let's try it out, how does it work for our students here in Selma? And so that's where we, as a team, took a look at the different options that we had and Desmos really seemed like what was the best for what our students would need. Go ahead and go up to the next slide. So why, why this? Desmos offers lots of differentiation within the lessons themselves, okay? So when when we're talking about the actual delivery of instruction, it's not just going to be a cookie cutter lesson. Okay, we've got suggestions embedded within the lesson for our English learners, for our sped students. They also have challenges for those kids that are like, they've got the content, okay, they need to go a little further, a little deeper. Not have more work added onto their plate, but how do they go deeper in the learning? This is all written into the lessons and so a teacher, on the on the teacher end, we're taking a look and we're saying, how can we facilitate and minimize the thinking and effort into planning and revising lessons? And make it more about the delivery of the instruction and looking for evidence of student learning. So go ahead and go on to the next slide. So that's where we come to this idea of formative assessments. Most curriculums are going to have your end of the unit chapters, your checks for understanding in the middle. But illustrative math has gone further and they've written in cooldowns for every single day, every lesson. The learning objective of that lesson has a specific cooldown, so a teacher can see right away, do my students understand the objective of the day? And so that's already embedded into the into the curriculum. Go ahead and go on to the next slide. Within the actual delivery of instruction, there's additional opportunities for formative assessment. We call it informal, because it's not a test, it's not a quiz, it's how are students understanding what I'm wanting them to understand right here and now in the moment. And so we see immediate feedback, both to the students and to the teachers. So students will, for example, today we're doing equivalent ratios and they were doing a balance. And so the kids will put in numbers and they'll try it out and they get immediate feedback as, yes, that's an equivalent ratio, it's balanced. Or no, look, that's too much over here. And so we we use this feedback to engage in academic discourse. It's not just about the teacher showing you how to get an answer, it's what are we noticing, what are we wondering about? What strategies did so and so use on this lesson and how can we apply that to this next activity? And so all of a sudden, your lesson becomes very rich and engaging and it's about student learning. It's not about just getting an answer or getting through a lesson. And so these live results, we can pull student thinking up and that ownership is right there with the students. And so that they really respond well as also, it's not like a boring math lesson, it becomes a very live and rich. It becomes a very live and rich experience beyond just a delivery of a lesson. Okay, so go ahead and go to the next slide. So in addition to the interactivity of the lessons themselves, they also provide very detailed guidance to teachers about what do I do when students don't understand this? It's, they give a lot of structure and support. So those PLC conversations that we are investing in, in our district, will become more efficient and effective. And we also have admin snapshots. Those are tools for the site administrator. What should I be seeing in this, in these lessons when I go into the classrooms? It's there for them. And then we also have family resources in both English and Spanish. So families can know what it is that their students are learning about at school and math. So then go ahead and go to the next slide. It comes down to the cost, right? How much is this going to cost? So Desmos, for us to continue the pilot for the remainder of this year, the cost is $20 per student, but we get a Title I discount annually. That's something that we would continue to get if we were to adopt beyond. So it comes down to $16 per student for the remainder of the year. We have about 1,000 of our students working within this pilot. We have all of the ALMS middle school students, the entire math department is participating. We have a sixth grader at Indianola is participating. And then we have our Virtual Learning Academy students in sixth, seventh, and eighth are participating. So that's just under 1,000 students. So that's the cost for all. Go ahead and go to the next slide. So this slide is just kind of giving you an overview of my role as the district math coach. What am I going to be doing? I'm going to be in contact with the publishers. I'm going to be doing instructional coaching with all of the teachers that are participating, meaning I'm going to be meeting with them in their rooms, facilitating PLC, taking a look at data. How do we use that data to drive instruction? I'm going to be meeting with the site administrators so that they are part of the process. And then, of course, communicating with our district leadership as well as you on how the, on how things are going. And I'm hoping to see you again before the end of the year. I'd like to give you an update kind of mid-year on how things are rolling out. And so with that, that's kind of my quick rundown of what's going on. But I'd like to offer an opportunity if there's any questions you might have or things that I can clarify further for you.
Is that 16,000 per year or is it one type?
So this would be for the, it's by student. So however many student licenses we have, that would be the cost. So that would be the cost for the remainder of this current year.
So student would be using on their Chromebook or anything like that?
Yes, yeah. So we have, so the 80% would be utilized on a Chromebook. And so there's also additional facilitation kind of worksheets and things that, and note-taking pages. So there's paper materials that enhance the lessons, but the bulk of the material would be done on the Chromebook, yeah, for that interactivity piece. But in addition to that, even the paper-based versions, they're not just like a worksheet that you're doing independently. It's an interactive facilitated kind of a lesson. So kids are engaging in collaborative discussions in their groups or working around the room, things like that.
Well, Dr. Alvarado, being his background is math, you better get on board, buddy. Doing the right thing here.
Yeah, and like I said, I really look at this as an opportunity for us as a focused effort. And then that we can expand into the elementary, seeing how we can get an alignment of K-8 and then into the high school, what that might look like. So our teachers are really excited about it and I'm looking forward to leading the process.
So when I was here for a couple of days and I met with some math teachers, what I did do, because there was concerns about how the kids are coming up to us. So I was fortunate. It was a really good conversation. And then I had told them about what Kim was doing at the middle school. So Kitty arranged to show them what's happening so that we're all on the same page, that vertical conversation. And I think it really has launched some ongoing vertical conversations because they were saying the kids were coming ready and clearly we had a gap in our instruction. So, and it is across the board. Our math scores are very poor. But, but anyway, so before we got too far on, and the high school folks weighed in and I think they felt comfortable, Kitty, right? With what they saw, what was happening. And so that's good. So we'll be continuing that vertical conversation.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so thank you, Kim.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Uh, yes. Oh, yeah. So we need, we need, we need a motion and we need an action on this proposal.
I'll motion. I'd be glad to motion.
Second.
I have a motion from Roger, a second from Jennifer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. So moved. Yay.
Yeah. So the next action item we have is our SRR3 funds. We are required by law to have a plan in place for our SRR3 funds. So very thankful for Norma Brahasri, who has taken this on. I bugger, but she does, she does all the hard labor in it. But anyway, so we've collaborated on this and we need an action on this as well. Keep in mind, it's not, you know, rigid. It is fluid. But this is where we think we're going to be using our SRR3 funds. So thank you, Norma.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We, the district receives several pots of money during the COVID pandemic. And one of those is our SRR3. And this restounds for elementary and secondary school emergency relief funds. And out of all, several of the funds do require a plan be written and approved by the board. And so this is one of those pots of money that requires a plan be created, just like the LCAP that we get stakeholder input and that we present it to the board. And then once it's approved by the board, it'll be submitted to the county office for their review and their approval. The SRR funds that the district received are a little over $22 million. And it is very interesting to see that money be spent on some really great things that, that as a district, I think we're, we know will benefit our students and our staff as they work with our students. So I want to just highlight just a couple of areas in this plan. First, of the $22 million, we are required to spend at minimum 20% of those funds on the loss of instruction. And so we've, we've come up with some ideas of how we're going to use those funds to address lost instructional time. And again, a minimum of 20% of that money, which is just right under $5 million. And when we get to that, that's over, when we look at the actual action items, that's over a couple of years. So with this plan, one of the things that we were asked to do was to, whenever possible, coordinate it with other plans and other funds. So we did coordinate with our LCAP and our extended learning plan that we wrote last spring. And so we were allowed to use stakeholder input that we received for those two plans because a lot of what we're doing here devails with our LCAP and our extended learning plan. So you could see that we have the list of all of the stakeholder input sessions and processes that we had for those two plans. In addition to, we had specific input sessions for the SRR3 plans. We had a evening event virtual for the SRR plan. And then when we met, when I met with School Site Council and ELAC committees virtually, we also offered an opportunity for them to hear about the funds, learn about the plan, and then provide stakeholder input. If you look at page four of nine, the very last bullet is the input that we received directly for the SRR plan. Things like providing trauma-informed and resiliency training for staff. This one, additional bilingual instructional aids moving to grades first through third grade since we only have them in kindergarten. Additional after-school programs. This came from staff voice amplifiers or wireless mics for teachers. I think wearing the mask requires a lot more, you know, a lot more effort to be heard in a classroom. And so that was some input. And of course, some things could be purchased with these funds. The input is taken and they could also be purchased with other funds that we have in the district. Just specific action items that we will be using these funds for. And you've addressed some of these as a board. One of them is the outdoor learning environments. We know that being outdoors is a safe situation for lessons, for eating meals, for those types of things. So there is about $2 million, $2.2 million that will be used from SRR3 funds for those outdoor learning environments. There is a little over $12 million for HVAC replacements. Those are the air conditioning units for cafeterias and gymnasiums and some classroom replacements. We also, again, something you've talked about here, the drinking fountain retrofits are coming out of SRR3. And then the window replacements at some of the, some of the school sites. In addition to that, the 20% over the three years of the plan, we are using some of these funds to do the electrical upgrades at some of the school sites in order to accommodate the move to educational technology. And then the, we also use, are going to use these funds for the Virtual Learning Academy, which is a service that Selma Unified has really gotten out in front to provide our families with. I was just approached by a colleague in Kermit who said, hey, we heard you guys started a Virtual Learning Academy. Want to see what you guys are doing. So SRR funds will fund our Virtual Learning Academy as well as our independent study program that we started at Selma High School, which was designed to accommodate Selma High students so they don't need to transfer out of Selma High School but are able to attend independent study programs and still maintain their status as Selma High students. Those are the ways that we will be utilizing these funds. We are required to monitor our progress. And so the very last page, page eight of nine, part of the progress monitoring will involve, you know, following timelines that Mrs. Apuriti and the staff will be using to ensure that those, those things are happening on the timelines that we are working on. And then in terms of Virtual Learning Academy and ISP, we'll be using our, our local assessments, our Star Renaissance and Math assessments to monitor student progress within those two programs. So though that, in a nutshell, is the plan. I said at the beginning, $22 million goes really fast. But again, really, really much-needed items and very, very useful services for our students. Available for any questions and Mrs. Apuriti also.
Any questions?
I'll make a motion to the prayer of 19D.
Second. I have a motion from Jennifer and a second from Rosemary. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, if I could have my screen up. So this is, I just wanted to take a few minutes to go over some information. Thank you, Ms. Rios. Regarding our budget outlook for next year, we are starting these conversations early, as you know. The one of the issues that we presented to the community in the consolidation is the reduction of costs, which we are definitely looking at. But it's also a structural thing that probably, as we've talked, you, you as a community have talked before. But right now, I really want to talk about our budget outlook because this is something I think in our office, we talk about every day as we start thinking about programs and what we need to do with our students. So I handed out three articles here and if anybody wants them, I can, we can make them available. I'm going to do some quoting out of it. And the first one is out of Cal Matters. It just came, two of these just came out in the last week as I was preparing this. And you know, fiscal crisis and management assistant team, FICMAT, comes into school districts and works with school districts on their finances, operational, structural issues. And the quote from the Michael Fine, the CEO, said, "California school districts have two choices. They can bite the bullet and make budget cuts now or delay them and face even more painful decisions." This is a real reality. And as we've looked and when I go through our numbers, you'll see that this is something that we have been talking about since last year. Remember the cliff? The cliff, the little red schoolhouse going with the cliff? So this, when I hear Michael Fine talking about it to all school districts, we're not alone in this, as you know. So in the article, it talks about, we have a record amount of money into education. So why is, why are we having this problems, these problems? And it's declining in attendance and enrollment, which is partially determined, which partially determines school funding. In the first year of the pandemic, California public schools lost more than 160,000 students. And that's the largest enrollment drop in two decades. And they predict that it will continue to decrease by 703,000 students by 2031. So the state is, as you know, still surging, are still funding based on your enrollment right now. Our enrollment, we're being paid because of what, 18, 19 enrollment? But that's going to come to the end next year. And you're going to see declining enrollment and surging chronic absenteeism. And that's a huge problem that our principals are facing. I was visiting a principal on Friday, going over evaluation, and there were 90 students out. One-sixth of the school was out that day. And, and tracking these kids down and getting people to respond, it's troubling. So we have all this money, just as we just approved the SRRS plan. But you can see it's very limited in what we can use it for. Ed Source article last week came out. "Without state intervention, many districts face substantial cuts. State funding can be forced to make significant cuts for next year." And it really depends on our enrollment minus the daily average attendance. So those 90 kids out, that was a nice little hit. And, but it's not just one day. We're seeing it chronically. And the state ride enrollment, out of this source, says the same thing. 3% decline, 160,000 students in 2021. So it's nice that they have the same numbers anyway. So in this article, it shows the decline here. San Francisco Unified, 3,500 kids. Los Angeles Unified, 27,000 kids. West Contra Costa, and I don't know how big they are, but 18% student enrollment reduction, that's pretty big. And then Oakland Unified is 25,000 students. And I think they're not quite 30,000. So we're looking at significant cuts. And in the policy, there's another article I didn't give to you, the Public Policy Institute of California. And, and I really liked that this was a year ago, so it was already predicting it. But the next one slide talks about, and they're, "Most district-level declines in student enrollment are large and long-lasting." So this will not be a quick fix. This will not be short-term. I think this is something that this district and every other community is going to need to deal with. And so whether the challenge is, is when you downsize because of enrollment, it doesn't lead always to budget savings because it's not a student-to-student, you know, it's not a, you cut this much. Because it's hard to shed the cost at the same rate your enrollment goes down. Why? Because you still need, yes, teachers are generally the ones, and some classify will be impacted, but other costs need to remain to, you know, they, it's not equitable. It's not going to be because you still have to have people to run the place and all the other issues. And some are fixed costs that you cannot necessarily cut. Debt service maintenance, and then some positions you still need to maintain regardless of the size. So but in the end, the last three bullets are very interesting. You know, with the decline in enrollment, our costs per pupil are going up. So that there's a positive out of this whole thing. But where you're, even though we're cutting costs, we're still spending more per pupil. So and they, they predict that the state spending on declining enrollment adjustment will continue to increase. So we're going to So we're going to see the state spending more for less kids. So it is, that's a very thick article that is quite interesting. The next slide, I've shown this at our meetings, community meetings. This is our School Services of California that shows the entire state in all those pinks and reds. The dark red is the one with the most decline. And it's variegated based on the percentage of decline, but except for the blue one, one up there, I don't know what's going on up there, but pretty nice. But they're increasing, but I think it's rural, so it's all relative. But as you can see, the entire state is in declining enrollment. We're right in the Central Valley, so we're in the medium part. But we are, if anything, we'll see us maybe stabilize more than the, than the high affluent areas because of the cost of living in the economy. So. Anyway, so the next slide, oops, we got some color on there, I probably did that. So you can see, I apologize, this is, my slide got messed up here. So anyway, you can see the enrollment loss. Four-year enrollment loss, three hundred. Okay. So from eighteen, nineteen to through this year, we are anticipating in three hundred and forty-eight enrollment loss. So the ADA loss was a hundred and forty-six. So let's pop to the next slide because that one's not good. But when we're looking at the enrollment on ten, five, twenty-one, we had six thousand forty-five. And you can see what our enrollment is today. We've lost students since the beginning of October. Then when you do the eighteen, nineteen ADA rate of ninety-five point six, we come up to fifty-seven, fifty-nine. And the whole harmless ADA was six thousand eighty-two, that's what we're getting paid for. So our loss in ADA is three hundred and twenty-three. And you multiply that and you get the three point eight, three seven million dollars in lost revenue for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Then what happened to these slides? We got to check this next time. That's really weird. Then we have other funds that we lose, state and federal funds, including L C F F in the enrollment loss. We will see over in twenty-two, twenty-three, another hundred, nine hundred and forty-one. So over the last four years, you've seen the climb, but then subsequently there's increases. So it doesn't really weigh out, but down the road, you will see a decline in your L C F F funds. So when you look at the L C F F and federal, along with our revenue limit, we're looking at a four point eight million dollar shortfall for twenty-two, twenty-three. And the real challenge that Andrea pointed out is that, and all the C B Os are talking about it. You can usually, when you see the decline, you can start making those plans slowly. But we're getting hit with two years of decline in one swoop. So we're going to have to deal with a two-year decline of enrollment in one, in one, at one time, pretty much. Okay? So we've, really, I just want to bring this up. So while it doesn't need, mean, seem to be significant that, you know, the consolidation, and I'll bring it up, you know, it will seize, we will see at least a five hundred thousand dollar savings by consolidating this two schools. Because we, we went very on gross numbers at the top and we didn't dig down deeply. But those, a little here and a little there is going to make a difference. You know, restructuring our M O T was a hundred thousand dollar savings. So all those little, and I know the parents were upset about extending the walking distance, but between not getting bus drivers and the cost for transportation, something has to give. We will work with that situation, but we're going to have to be really creative of how we can serve our families while still being solvent. So, you know, and I know that one, we have done well and we continue to, to look at ways of reducing cost and building the unrestricted reserve. But if you do not cut, then your reserve is going to go from ten point one, where it is now, to six and, you know, six percent in one fell swoop if we don't make any reductions. And that's not where I think you want to be long-term. Yes.
Yeah. And just remind everybody too, we do have a board policy for the ten percent reserve.
Right. So some of the things that we're going to be doing is we're going to, I'm going to start working with our district and site personnel to look at prioritizing what our kids need in terms of instruction. We know we have to, we have a lot of issues with our kiddos and, and the instruction that they need and services they need. So we need to, we already kind of had that conversation last, right after I was signed on here in June about what the principals prioritized and we made some decisions then. So I think we need to continue that conversation. And I'm looking at really monitoring and possibly free, freezing our vacant positions because none of us want to hire people and then have to let them go. And so we're looking at every single vacant position as it comes up. Do we really need it? Can we get it done in a different way? Because we don't want to turn around and go through that process if we don't need it. We also will be analyzing all requests for new positions very thoroughly again to see, do we really need it? Is there another way to get it done? We're going to, we did a lot of adjusting of staff this year based on their current enrollment. So that's helped us a lot. So when we had to staff up V L A, we took existing staff on our side. And I know Mrs. Sinikian over there was, really worked hard to adjust some staff based on enrollment. And she gave up several teachers because we just didn't have the numbers. But that's a very hard job once you've started school and reshuffling everybody's schedule. But we are going to really closely staff for next year very, very tightly because we keep dropping. And so we can't assume the kids are going to show up. We're going to be looking at our classified and certificated management positions and see how we can consolidate to make some reductions. We're going to be looking at developing staffing parameters based on industry standards. So I've been reaching out to my superintendent colleagues and getting stuff from other districts. So we'll make decisions based on numbers and some versus just because, you know, that we look at numbers of students and then any other variables that would impact how, why you would need more staffing and make decisions that way and try to get everybody on a, you know, level playing field, so to speak. We're going to also try to identify potential retirees to avoid any unnecessary layoffs, maybe even look at a, a retirement incentive just to, so we can avoid some of that pain and suffering and laying off people and then people deciding to retire. And then we're back, we circle back around. So people need to start thinking that. I know, I know people are probably investigating. In fact, we have talked to someone last week who will be going out to the sites and talking about stirs and purrs and this, they will sit and work with people to figure out their eligibility. So we're going to be starting those conversations just to help our staff think if they're close, you know. Not that we want to get rid of them, but we're just trying to keep it all going here. And then we are really trying to maximize our L C F F and COVID resources. We've moved a number of positions over to COVID, which helped us in dropping down to the unrestricted side that helped us re-save money in the unrestricted. And then Narma is, and her team continue to comb and look and see if ways that we can reduce any expenses to the unrestricted. And so what I've asked Daniel to do in our accountant to take our, he's putting together something that we can show where all of our people are positions paid across, let's see, all the positions and how they're paid. So that we see, because I know this is really confusing. So like, you have aides paid across every funding source. But if we, if it doesn't benefit, we, I just don't want to take away something that, that just to say we're cutting. It needs to be logical and that it's going to help us. And so, or be able to survive through that. So it's going to be real clear to you how people are funded and why that particular position needs to be kept because it hurts our ongoing. Does that make sense? So we're trying to come up with a way so we're very transparent about who is paid from what source so that you can make, so you can see how we arrive at decisions. Okay? And we are, you know, looking and as Mr. Badoya has talked about, you know, some of the expenses for operating the Washington site can move to, to the adult school program because they're there. So that is a cost savings. We haven't even calculated what that looks like for us. So it's really being, thinking out of the box and maximizing all those resources and being very mindful of the, the charges that come out. And one of the reasons Dr. Catania mentioned the cost of the adoptions, we have a lot of expenses coming down too. So we have to be putting away for that. Because our, for instance, we have several adoptions that are way out of whack in terms of years and have to, has to be addressed. And the math issue is, in my opinion, very critical. So we'll be starting that conversation with our team, with our administrative site and district level folks. And then we will be bringing to you the thing where we have saved money, where we have adjusted some things. There, you know, to accommodate the reduction in services. But then you see on this other side with COVID, all the needs for counseling and all the health. It's this wonderful balancing act that we have to do and that's hard for people to understand in the community. And then I know that. The second thing we've done is I, I got the chart today and had one of our staff comb through all of the things that we've spent our COVID dollars on. And I just got it this afternoon, the binder is about this thick moving into a second binder. But really being, we will bring that back and show you how we have used all of the COVID resources and what the plans are in the future. But I didn't have it in enough time to be able to share it. But we should have that for you at the next board meeting. So we continue the conversation. I think, in my opinion, we should continually bring forth ideas and things that we will be asking staff. And we'll, again, look at how we need to operate the district to continue functioning well. So, but we don't want to wait until January to start this conversation. So we will, the next, the next board, the board meeting in December will be your first interim. So you'll be able to see where we are and where it's projected. And I will assume in the multi-year projections, we're going to show a decline in revenue based on what we know today. We'll let that be.
Yeah, we will base the L C F F calculator will be based on what we project our enrollment will actually be.
So you'll see in December where we're projected to be. Okay?
Yeah. I think it's good that we're being proactive. Because it was just a few short years ago, we got killed for not being a little bit more fiscally responsible. You know, we ran through seven percent of a reserve in three years. And we were trying, trying to be nice, not lay anybody off, not have the hard talks, not make the cuts. And then it was bad. So I think we got to, what we're doing right now is actually the, the best thing we could do, in my opinion. And it's only the responsible thing to do. I think what happened last time was very irresponsible of this district to let it climb down, climb down, climb down, and then not want to make the tough calls, the tough decisions, keep everybody happy. And then look what happened. So now, now because of the COVID money, some of it, you know, we've got kind of that little buffer. So.
So we did one thing this year, if we didn't toward, we didn't fill some of our vacancies. And thank goodness we didn't until we saw kids showed up. So that helps. So that's, we're going to be really tight, very, very tight on that.
Yeah, I think we have to be. I appreciate you guys doing that. I think the past administration or some of those people in the past administration was a little bit lax or maybe afraid to make the hard calls.
Well, it's not a comfortable place to be.
I know, I know.
But any questions? Yes.
Yeah, Devin Shepherd, I see if it's a continuous declining, we need to, we work some lots of areas, not only one expenditures needs to be cut down. Obviously the classes needs, if it's a shorter classes, maybe cut down the classes, maybe we'll look into that. And instead of having the smaller classes, maybe that might be it. And looking into the, also the, the freezes on the increasing on the salary or the teachers or the staff, maybe one or two years or something like that benefits, you know, so much. So we need to look into the future, how it continues declining, that I know last ten, fifteen years, we went in increasing everything, the teacher's salary and all of that, everything going up. So if it's, we got to cut down every, all aspect of it. That's what I see in too. So we just need to work closely. We don't want to get into the other way than school shutting down or anything like that.
And one of your challenges, and when you do the calculations on, you have two small schools. Should this consolidation, you'll still have two small schools, those really do take, you do take a hit on operating that. And so really being mindful in the future, how you adjust for that and looking at ways to, to, as really being, paying close, close attention to those schools. And because it doesn't take long to get upside down on those. Okay. So if you have ideas, please let me know. I know this board will let me know if you have ideas. So I look forward to hearing them.
Look at everything, please.
So now our career technical education facilities program grant agreement.
Yes, so we received our official grant agreement from the state for the C T E, the new construction pathway for patient care. We, our grant amount is officially one million, four hundred eighty-six thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars, which the district will match using Measure O funds. And this, although it says action item, this was really brought just so we could share the good news. We knew that we were receiving this grant, but this makes it official. And we are waiting for the one for the advanced manufacturing to come. So we will share when that one comes in as well.
So see, so the next few items now, when I go through that scenario, people are going to go, well, why are you doing that? Well, because the next item, for instance, is the consultative services. These all are special funding. So the C T E grant, which we are very thankful for, and you're going to be so pleased. We have the plans for both the C T E buildings that we've walked through with the architects. They're pretty amazing. It will be just beautiful and our kids are going to, and adults, because our adult school will use it as well. We'll be very happy. But we also received A V one thirty learning recovery plan grants, funds. And we want to use sixty thousand of it for consultant services with inclusive hearts, ability center. And we're really looking for board certified behavioral assistants to work with our kids that are really struggling in the classrooms and to support our teachers and how to deal with behaviors. So this is a consultant contract. this is a consultant contract, um, for, uh, inclusive parts for a, uh, BCBA, uh, services.
Make a motion to approve 19G.
No second.
I have a motion from Jennifer, a second from Roger. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. So moved.
The second one is, the next one is for Dr. Jackie Chiang to come in and work with our, uh, special ed, um, professionals, including psychologists and SLPs, working with them on how, uh, identification of students with disabilities, but also to address learning loss. And again, this is funding specific for learning loss that we cannot use in the unrestricted budget. And it's a $10,000, uh, contract.
I'll make a motion to approve 19H.
No second.
Motion from Jennifer, a second from Roger. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. So moved.
So we also are including a proposal from Legacy Life Coaching Academy that, um, is, uh, a nonprofit that works with school students directly. They'd be, what this provides is three coaches. Um, life coaches to, uh, full-time at Selma High School and also Heartland. And this is a nonprofit that Alan Autry has put together with a great team. And I'm thankful that Dr. Catania connected us with them. They're very excited about working in Selma. And it's not just the students, but the families and the community in a whole. And this will be paid from our LCFF funds. It can also be paid from Title I. Uh, so we may split on that because we just received some new funds, additional funds in Title I. So it may be a split funded issue.
Make a motion to approve 19I.
No second again.
Motion from Jennifer, a second from Roger. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. So moved.
The next one is ripple effects of curriculum. Again, we, we can use Esser funds for this. This is, um, this is a curriculum for students, um, with some behavioral issues and looking about the impacts of their behavior uh, in the classroom. And so it's an additional, um, service that, um, Mr. Campbell and his team have requested. And we can pay for this out of the Esser funds.
I'll motion to accept 19J.
Second, motion from Roger, a second from Jennifer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. So moved.
The next item is an employment contract for Dr. Johnny Operato. The contract is, um, uh, he starts on the fifth step and his, he has all the same compensation as all other administrators in the district and is being funded out of LCFF.
Make a motion to approve 19K.
Second. Yes.
Okay, motion from Jennifer, a second from Nick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. So moved.
Um, we again, another stars from, um, our COVID is extended learning opportunity program. And we are requesting that the board approve an additional mental health clinician, uh, for, funding from the extended learning opportunity program.
Make a motion to approve 19L.
Okay.
Motion from Jennifer, a second from Rosemary. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. So moved.
Um, oh, okay, I'm done.
Uh, thank you. On 19M, there's a proposal to create a job description for a transporter. Um, this is basically someone who does not need a class B license for best driving, um, but someone who might either transport students or parents, um, to classes during the day, uh, specialized classes that may be at other school sites, uh, like ROP classes or special education classes uh, that are held at centers or, uh, county programs in other schools. Uh, and also might transport student and parents to evening events. Um, in my cover memo, I do want to point out that, um, my initial conversation with, uh, Ms. Niderquell, our director of transportation, indicated that we would not be asking the board to um, create any type of job for this at this time, uh, and to be used as needed. Uh, but we have lost another, uh, bus driver out of the transportation department. So she did ask that at another board meeting that we may, may reconsider that. So I, um, just wanted to let you know that my cover memo, um, again, indicates that we would not be requesting any kind of position change from the board. Uh, but that may come before the board, uh, in another proposal in November.
So this is just creating the job description for this.
Correct.
That's all. Make a motion to approve 19M. I second. I have a motion from Jennifer, a second from Rosemary. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. So moved.
Uh, thank you. Uh, you have a, an assortment of classified job descriptions before you. Um, uh, 19N1 is to revise a bus driver instructor position to delineate responsibilities, uh, during the absence of the director and also to include, um, increased responsibilities for, uh, recruitment and for training throughout the summer, uh, to build the um, actual program, uh, hopefully build our cadre of best drivers that are trained through Selma Unified. Um, the uh, there's a revision to the, uh, transportation support specialist, uh, position to excuse me, the, um, 19N2 is the routing technician again to identify, uh, that we have a director of transportation. Uh, and also to on occasion, if there are no, uh, bus drivers, uh, if the bus driver instructor, uh, is driving around and if the director is driving around, that the transportation routing technician, technician may on occasion drive students, uh, to these specialized programs. And again, to reflect that our, the supervisor is a director of transportation rather than a supervisor. The transportation support specialist has the same changes. Um, there are revisions to the ASB technician position at the high school and the middle school to reflect the responsibility uh, to adhere to FICMAT, um, uh, FICMAT responsibilities, uh, and, uh, uh, with their accounting procedures and also to ensure that there's a two-party counting procedure, uh, in place whenever deposits are being made. Um, uh, the administrative assistant of athletics and activities, there's a, a proposal before the board to change the uh, title to activities rather than student services. And also to ensure that, uh, again, when this person is, is making deposits, that it's a two-part, two-party, uh, process to verify those, those deposits. Do you have any questions regarding any of these changes?
Make a motion to approve 19N1 through six.
No second.
I have a motion from Jennifer, a second from Roger. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Please note for the record that Nick was not here for the vote.
So 19O.
19O. I'll make a motion to table 19O.
No second.
I second.
Okay, Rosemary.
Motion from Jennifer, a second from Rosemary. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nick was out.
Nick was.
He was somewhere.
Note for the record that Nick was not here for the vote. And 19P.
Uh, yes. So we have a request from child nutrition to hire a full-time eight-hour position food service assistant too, here at Selma High School. Um, originally, when we contracted with Kingsburg High School, we weren't sure how many meals we would be, uh, serving over there. So they did not hire anyone, um, at the beginning. Uh, we are serving over 200, uh, meals daily over there. Um, and there are several options that they get to choose from. So it's not just one item. Um, so we are requesting to add a position to assist in preparing those meals. Uh, the cost would be between 51,524 and 62,162 and would be paid for by the cafeteria fund.
And this is going to be an ongoing permanent position?
Yes, as long as we're contracted with, uh, Kingsburg High to serve the meals.
So is that going to be written into the language on this position then, that as long as they're contracted, we're doing the contract with Kingsburg?
Um, do we include that in the contract? There, we'll make sure that it's, it states that it's, uh, based on the need of having, uh, Kingsburg.
Okay, okay. Just as long as that's in there somewhere.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve 19P with the change in the appropriate language.
Second. A motion from Jennifer, a second from Rosemary. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. So moved.
Okay, next item is for vape sensors and camera safety, uh, project at, here at Selma High School. Uh, the project includes 26, uh, sensors to be installed in the restrooms. Uh, the sensors can detect and identify the difference between vaping and vaping with THC. Uh, the halo sensors can detect sounds such as yelling, aggressive behavior, bullying. Um, and that once the detector detects any of these situations, it notifies administrators and campus security staff um, in real time. Um, and there'll be seven cameras placed in locations outside of the areas so that we'll be able to monitor, uh, when those, uh, sensors go off, we'll be able to monitor who was coming in and out of uh, those areas at that time.
Are these the same ones that we have at the middle school?
Yes.
And how are those working at the middle school?
Uh, that I don't know.
Mrs. Senekian, they're asking about the vape sensors at the middle school. How they're working.
Unfortunately, I was informed they're waiting for the cabling.
Oh, so we don't, they're not even installed?
Yeah.
Ah, okay. I will follow up on that.
Okay. Well, there you go.
There you go. Okay. And the cost of this project is, uh, 74,472 and 53 cents, um, be paid through LCFF funds. Uh, and will be purchased, um, uh, off of a piggyback from, uh, the Merced Focus Contract.
So then my own, okay, not that I hesitate to do this, but I'm just curious. So we the ones for the middle school, do we have a timeline? I mean, those were ordered a while back.
That was news to me, this now.
So I'm, I'm just kind of curious, is it, we got a supply and demand issue or are they like somewhere off the coast of California?
Probably are.
They're in a neighborhood. They're in a neighborhood in Long Beach.
We will get back to you on that.
I will, I will find out where we are.
That was news to me.
I wasn't aware of this.
I'll go ahead and motion to approve this, but I just would like.
With the timeline.
Yes, please. Thank you.
I'll second.
Yeah.
A motion from Jennifer and a second from Roger. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. So moved.
All right. Uh, the next item is for the purchase of, uh, tools and equipment for the transportation shop. Uh, it's a purchase from Snap-on Tools. Uh, it was a recommendation from, uh, Mr. Birkey when he came to do his analysis of the transportation department. It was brought to our attention that, um, we had a lot of, um, a lot of the tools that were being used. Um, uh, and that were available and being used were, um, belonged to the employees that worked in the shop. So we wanted to provide them the tools they need. And then we also, uh, realized that there were several pieces of equipment, uh, and tools that they did not have that were pertinent to their work. Uh, we decided to, um, pull the Band-Aid and just purchase it all at once. Uh, Mr. Birkey was actually here on Friday. Um, and is, uh, was reviewing, uh, the order. And he was very pleased to hear that we were, uh, going to bring this to the board and.
Do we have a way that we will inventory these tools and make sure that they don't grow less?
They are actually going to be etched. Yes.
Okay.
Etched and we put.
Inventory.
Yeah. And, and Mr. Johnson has inventory for large items already. So yes, we will. We're on that.
Yes, they will be. Uh, and the nice thing about these, should something, they're going to have a very long life. Um, so we're not going to have to replace these on a regular basis. If you go with the less, uh, expensive ones, you're going to have to consistently replace them. And then should anything go wrong with them, there is a guarantee they'll come back and they'll replace, uh, the broken tool with a, a new one.
Right.
And this is at a government rate. So you can, you can see, uh, on the quote, there's the list price and then what the government, uh, rate is.
I'll motion to accept 19R.
Second. A motion from Roger, a second from Nick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. So moved.
That is, of all the ones we've approved, that's one out of general fund. Sorry.
Yeah, no, that's all right. You know, I, uh, Mr. Uh, was it Birkey?
Birkey.
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, that guy was very passionate. And, uh, yeah, he was really into, I, I talked to him for a while. So, uh, yeah, I just wanted to say that he was, yeah, he was right on it, man.
Yeah.
Do it and bad.
He was very excited when he came to visit on Friday. He was very excited to hear and see the changes that have already taken place. Um, we had a really good conversation, uh, Miranda and I with him. Um, and, uh, I thank you for this. The shop guys are going to be.
Raphael.
Raphael is going to probably do a dance.
Yeah, they should never have been bringing their own.
Real liability. We also just found out last week that we qualify, we as a district are qualified for an electric bus, a new electric bus. We don't have any. So Mr. Birkey and Miranda are both, um, they're gonna, we're gonna apply to replace at least one of our buses with an electric bus. So we'll see if that goes through. Although, don't talk to Raphael about electric buses. But he'll get over it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll start with the tools.
Yeah, we'll give him that first. So the next item is from SIM PDK, a project addendum for the district office improvements. This has been on the table for years and, uh, the improvements would be adding four portables to, to the district office and, and replacing, um, repaving that back. Um, parking lot, which we've had numerous workers comp complaints, our issues on.
The mess.
It is, it's pretty bad. Um, so we can fund this out of our Esser funds, LCFF and developer fees. So it's no, it's not measure O. And so, and we already own the portables. Um, and we'll also be, we're also looking and getting in it to look to move the maintenance yard out to transportation. And that would be done at the same time that we can use developer fees for that as well. So, um, but we definitely need to do something with that. That, um, parking lot is, is a huge hazard. I'm, we probably should shut it down, quite frankly. But I don't know what we'd do with people. But, uh, anyway, so we figured out how to make this work and we're actually working off of previous plans that were done in 2016. So this has been on, sitting around for a while. So anyway.
The hundred thousand is for just for designing?
Yeah, for the architectural plans and everything.
The total is 800,000?
Um, by the time, the total will be, it was 795 and 108, 95, 900,000. Closer to 900,000.
Our scope is the adding four portable units and the restroom?
And the restroom portable and the, the repaving and uh, of the parking lot.
We, we have any extra portable that we're going to move?
Oh, yes. We, we have portables out in the transportation yard. So it's moving those, placing them, putting the pad, all the infrastructure.
SIM is the only one architects we have or we have more?
No, we have Teeter.
Did we compare the prices?
No, I didn't ask them to do it. We can.
Uh, I just say if it's a few thousand bucks, save it maybe.
You want me to ask Teeter to?
If it's possible.
Sure. Yeah.
Do you want us to table this then?
You may table this if you would like.
So I'll make a motion to table 19S pending, um, additional bid from Teeter.
Second.
A motion from Jennifer, a second from Rosemary. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. So moved, we'll table the item.
Okay, next item, we have donations. We have several donations to approve, uh, for this evening. Uh, we have, um, a donation of $1,000 for the Skills USA Club at Selma High School. We have a donation of $1,000 for the Skills USA Club at Selma High School, made by Deborah Richardson, who also donated $4,000 for the Clarion, which is the Selma High School newspaper, and then $500 for Jeter and Scouts upkeep. So thank you, Ms. Richardson. Educational Employees Credit Union, $3,000 to be used to help offset the cost of the recognition and longevity awards for classified, certificated and management employees. Adventist Health donated hand sanitizer for students and staff at ALMS and valued at around $504. Walmart brought over number two pencils, binders, pocket folders, and those to be used district-wide wherever they are needed, valued at $505. And then Milano Restaurants International donated two booklets containing 50 awards for free personal pizza from Ian Eds for the students at Terry School, valued at $500. So thank you to all of our generous donors.
Make a motion to accept donations as presented.
Second.
Motion from Jennifer, a second from Rosemary. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. So moved. At this time, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and are acted on by the Board of Trustees in one motion. There is no discussion of these items before the board vote unless a member of the board, staff or public requests specific items be discussed and/or removed from the consent agenda. It is understood that the administration recommends approval on all consent items. Each item on the consent agenda approved by the members of the governing board shall be deemed to have been considered in full and adopted as recommended. Make a motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Motion from Jennifer, a second from Rosemary. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. So moved. At this time, any board members have?
Oh, can, I, I got an update on the ALMS vape sensor.
Look at ALMS back there.
Yeah, yeah. So the middle school project should be done this week. Project was delayed parts in scheduling from AMS Net due to a large demand on the cable installers. So that's where we're at with that project.
Yay. I've never had.
We can get it.
Okay, board reports.
Well, the Rotary Band, the festival is on Saturday, and it's going to be here at the school stadium too. So I went in the road trees for last, I don't know, maybe 10 years. So I'm looking forward on that, and I went to the homecoming games last week. It was awesome. It was, it was nice to watch, you know.
I got to watch some of the skits on social media. That was fun.
Yeah, that was fun. Thanks. That's it.
I have something. Last Wednesday, I believe it was last Wednesday, I toured Washington School, Roosevelt School, Garfield and Abraham Lincoln, and it was fantastic. I would like to thank Mrs. Hammond, Mrs. Turpin, Mrs. Chapa and Mrs. Senekian. I just might join you surprise on a Wednesday for karaoke at lunch.
She needs someone to sing with her.
Well, I'll do it only if it's lip sync, because nobody wants to hear me sing. We'll do a lip sync battle. But I was so impressed with each school. I want to thank everybody who was so warm and welcoming. Garfield, I want to hire their janitorial staff to come to my house. You could eat off their floors, it's beautiful. Great job, everybody. You guys, you guys rock.
Jennifer, you have anything? Nope. Roger?
Well, you know what, just what I already said earlier about the way Dr. Shepherd is leading the march on the budget and, you know, what's going to happen in the, what we got to prepare for in the future. It's just, I just love it because of what happened a few years ago, still fresh in my mind, and just couldn't believe, yeah, I couldn't, I couldn't believe it. So I just, it should never have happened, in my opinion. And so now it's going to happen. It's got to go this way.
Great, okay, I'll be quick. I attended the community meetings and I want to thank all of the community members for their input. I'd also like to recognize the Eric White students who came forward and spoke at that meeting. They were so articulate and so genuine and spoke from their hearts, and I was just so proud of them in that moment. They just have such a welcoming spirit and it was a really neat moment. I also want to recognize Mrs. Terrell's class out at ALMS. I am still in the process of reading all 47 letters. I will get through them, guys. They're writing, they have an assignment to write an argumentative letter. They are addressing dress code. They have some very good points. I still don't understand why we can't wear camo, but I'll figure it out. And, and one of the students lovingly wrote, "Mrs. Jensen, how would you feel if you couldn't dye your hair?" And I can't wait to tell her because of COVID, I went gray. These are very well-written.
Oh, that's great.
And I'm enjoying every one of them. And kids, don't worry, I'm, I'm going to respond. It's just taken me a while.
Are those letters being forwarded to Mr. Dixon's committee?
I was going to make a synopsis for him.
That'd be great, because we don't want to go back. We don't want to, you know, yeah, let's deal with it. For me, I just, we're going to be, we have put out twice an advertisement for Measure O Committee members. It's on the website under Miss Affrontees Area, under Business Services. We have no one, so I will be reaching out and personally inviting community members and parents to be a part of our Measure O Committee within the next week or two to get that thing going. And, and also, we, we met with, speaking Measure O, we did meet with our new construction management company, Bernard's. And so we will be bringing back the contract for their work with us. They're anxious to get started and we've got a lot of projects rolling out. So it should be a very active next year and a half to two years around here. And so, other than that, I don't really, and don't forget the rivalry game on Friday night. So, anyway, thank you.
Over there, right?
It's here, it's here.
Is it here?
It's here. And your, your names are always on the list to get in.
James is coming home for the game and the band festival.
Oh.
And now a rally. I know. Stitch in school on Friday, he says it's online. All right, I need a motion. So moved.
Second.
A motion to adjourn from Jennifer, a second from Nick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Needing this adjourned.